Everyone, uh, welcome back to our 5:30 council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Mr. Bozen.
Mr. Bozen, you're muted right now.
Dave Bozen.
He's still muted. We see him.
Uh.
It's a, and that's a visual here. Mr. Amos? Mr. Amos is still muted.
Uh, if you, if you all want to take, to... You would take off to mute on your phones, I mean, on your systems?
Mr. Amos?
You're muted.
Oh, I'm muted. Geez, gosh, sorry.
Mr. Amos?
Mr. Bozen? There he goes. Let me just turn this...
Yes.
All right, there we go. Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yeah.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Mrs. Jewin?
I'm here if you can hear me.
Yep. All right, we're all here.
All right. All right. So if you... If you are joining the meeting, if you're joining the meeting and you're not a city council person, could you please put your phone on mute? Thank you. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Uh, this evening's pledge will be led by, uh, Tim Jamison. Tim?
Do I hear the pledge?
Marty, are you there?
Yes.
I think, I think I owe Marty a pledge, sorry about that. All right, uh, could someone approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the April 6, 2020 regular session as proposed.
Second.
Does Sharon have her phone on as well?
Uh, Sharon, are you speaking through the phone? Or if...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it said that my internet connection was unstable.
Okay. Um, can you turn your...
I want your feedback.
Mute your, mute your laptop or your iPad.
Marty muted it.
No.
Yeah.
And that's, the problem is that I'm getting feedback.
All right, so... So why don't you do this? So, uh, on a, when you don't have to answer or speak, if you could put that on mute, uh, maybe that'll work. But, um, so we have a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. It's now time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to speak to issues that are not on the agenda. Uh, we do have one participant. Um, do you have a non-agenda related item?
Sylvia Jackson, uh, for the...
Okay. All right, is there anyone on the, uh, line that is, uh, wanting to, uh, speak to non-agenda related items? All right, uh, council, anything? All right, if somebody, uh, wants to, uh, uh, close oral presentations, we'll take it. So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the second to close oral presentations, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, oral presentations closed. Someone take the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda that's, uh, 1A through, uh, B, uh, 13.
All right, uh, can we get a second? All right, that motion has been made with the second. Um, madam clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Wait.
Yes.
Wait, really quickly, uh, the bill's payment for that, what's that number so I can read that?
And that includes the, Mr. Mayor, that includes the bill's payment of $2,927,950.65.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Yep, all right. Roll call again.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I ask, are you, are you... I am... Okay, I'm gonna call back.
Or, or, uh, Mrs. Jewin, can you, um, just, so, are you also on your computer audio too? It just says shaky?
I'm sorry.
Can you, um, drop off the, the phone line and just use your computer, computer audio?
I'm gonna get off everything and try it again.
Cause I think the problem is the phone is echoing with the computer, but you...
It might work better to just get off the video and just call in, that way.
So you just...
Well, then I thought I was off the video, so...
I can, I can see your lovely face.
You can?
I can. So just stay on the, so turn off, so, uh, just turn off the computer video and then just do, just stay on the phone line.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is it still out there? Is she still on there, Chris? Mrs. Jewin?
Not on right now.
She might, I think she hung everything up.
She did it her way.
Yeah.
So let's, uh, let's, let's keep, uh, uh, moving forward. So we had a, um, did we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We had seven votes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, we do, uh, in the audience today have Ms. Sylvia Jackson, who is joining our Planning, Programming, Zoning Commission. Uh, she is a new appointment, so if you would stand, please. Maybe, we just want to thank you so much for, uh, volunteering to serve. We know the pay is not great, but the reward is incredible, uh, for the city of Waterloo, and we thank you so much for your commitment to do this. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you. Um, you know, this, I think, is important for everyone to give back and share whatever we can and having moved back here, I've been gone for several years. Um, this is my home now, and I want to contribute in whatever way I can.
All right, thank you. And if you didn't hear, uh, Ms. Jackson just indicated, uh, this is her home. She is, she is back, uh, and, and being able to serve in any capacity, uh, she's excited to do so and thinks is highly important. So we thank you so much. Now, if you want to leave right now, you're able to do so as well.
Under the circumstances, I thank you.
Okay.
This is important to do.
All right. All right, thank you. And we have Mrs. Jewin back.
I'm on the phone.
We were lost without you.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, could someone take number two, please? Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication, notice of public hearing on the 2020 wastewater treatment plant and lift stations mowing contract.
Second.
That motion has been made with a strong second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone on the phone line that would like to, uh, ask a question? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specification form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Oh, shoot, Mr. Bozen, sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read then.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam clerk?
All right, our bid estimate was $41,211. Our first bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount for option A was eighty-seven, or $875 and $3,199. Option B is $219 and $825. Option C, $420 and $887. Option D, $973 for a total bid amount of $31,150. And then our second bidder was Wilson Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount for option A was $1,100 and $2,300. Option B, $725 and $1,000. Option C, $375 and $1,000. Option D, $904 for a total bid amount of $38,766.
All right, all right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting resolution awarding the bid to B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $31,150 in approving contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the 2020 wastewater treatment plant and lift stations mowing contract and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Questions, council? Madam clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the fiscal year 2020 CIVP pipelining phase, uh, IVA project contract number 1014. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that, uh, would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Anyone out in, uh, broadband land?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like, like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion was made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Was there an oppose?
Uh...
Okay.
Nope.
All right.
I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the collections system project director for review.
Second.
The motion, that, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
All right, our base bid estimate was $501,738. Oh, excuse me. Our base bid estimate was $501,738,024. I think I may have some numbers wrong on here. Yeah, it's $500,000. Must be a period there. Sorry about that. $501,738.24. Alternate one total estimate was $207,429.50. Alternate two total estimate was $106,316, and the base bid plus alternates total estimate is Our first bidder was Granite Inliner of Hugo, Minnesota. They provided 5% security. Their base bid amount was $954,886. Alternate one, $329,765. And alternate two, $177,920. And our second bidder was Municipal Pipe and Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid amount was $387,887.50. Alternate one, their bid was $302,635, and alternate two, their bid amount was $82,594.
All right, just those two bids?
Just those two.
All right, thank you. Could someone take, uh, four, five, and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Number four is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to the professional services agreement with AECom Technical Service Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed October 16th, 2017 in an amount not to exceed $99,000 in conjunction with the wastewater treatment plant clarifier number three maintenance and repairs project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number five is a resolution authorizing an exception to the Waterloo's purchasing procedures policy to approve the purchase of a 2020 police interceptor utility AWD-based vehicle in the amount of $33,577 from Scivers Ford of Wausau, Iowa. And number six is a resolution approving construction plans for storm sewer and paving serving the Audubon Hill second edition as submitted by Townsend Engineering of Davenport, Iowa.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions about these three items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, both, uh, number five and number six, uh, first, could somebody ex... Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, uh, could somebody explain number five, and then number six also explain that I've got some other questions, too?
Okay. Um, Randy, are you on, or is that Joe, or? Randy, are you on?
Uh, yes, uh, Randy. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Oh, we can really hear you very loudly.
Very, very loud.
Okay, uh, Randy, then...
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm getting terrible feedback. I don't know why.
I get it every day sometimes.
Everything is echoing.
I think, uh, Randy, I think Randy had his phone up a little too loud, so can we try it again? Are you getting it from me too, Pat, or is it just Randy?
I was getting feedback from you as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Barting.
Yeah. Randy, we can hear you. Just maybe don't speak so, it sounds like you're talking right into your phone, maybe hold it away a little bit cause it, we're getting, it's really loud on our end.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm like two feet away from my phone.
No, she was talking about Randy.
Yeah, just, just Randy. You sound fine, Mr. Morrissey.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, vehicle is a, um, police rated vehicle for first portion of its life, um, cycle would be in, um, signing zone, and then from there, it's gonna get allocated into this. We ready?
Hey, Randy, 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 are you on speakerphone?
No, I'm not.
Yeah. So...
On my left.
Cause it was hard to understand your words. If you can try that one more time?
To get it under the police, um, banning for... Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, are you on the com, do you have a computer and a phone at the same time?
No, on a computer only.
Okay, yeah, it's really bad. So, so, uh, the exception to the Waterloo purchasing policy, just if you could try that, or, again.
Okay, this was pre-bid through the Iowa, um, the Iowa DOT.
So it's pre-bid through the Iowa DOT. Um, does this, is... Joe, do you, are you able to tell? Um, so, so Pat, I mean, uh, Mr. Councilman Morrissey, um, we've, we've done this before to be able to, um, to get vehicles that, uh, that are even better price. And so that's the exception to be able to, to, um, do this. So is that correct, Randy?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
And then number six?
Yes, my, my questions, Mr. Mayor, are, uh, just I'd like to get, um, what this is, uh, why it is, and one, what funding source this comes from, and then how many properties this project will serve?
All right, uh, Jamie?
Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
You're extremely loud, too.
Okay, uh, is this better?
Perfect.
Yeah, much better.
Okay. Jamie Knutson, city engineer. This is a new subdivision that is being proposed. The engineering department reviews the plans prior to construction to make sure that it meets city requirements. There is no cost to the city. This is all private development. As far as the number of lots, I would have to look into that and get back to you, Mr. Morrissey. As far as the number of lots served, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no, uh, a, any stormwater, uh, P funds or any other city funds that come out of this or part of this?
Correct. There are, there's no cost to the city for this. The developer's paying for all the infrastructure costs. Um, at some point when the construction is completed, we will come back to council with an acceptance and the maintenance bonds, um, for council to accept once the project's completed. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Madam clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take, uh, seven, eight, and nine, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
Number seven is a resolution approving an amendment to the purchase agreement dated February 18th, 2020 with Parking Inc. of Des Moines, Iowa, in the, the amount of $40,453 for the installation of the parking control premise server in conjunction with the Waterloo Parking Access and Control System project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a request by AutoZone Inc. to approve the preliminary plot of Kimball Edition, a two-lot commercial subdivision located south of 3115 Kimball Avenue. And next is a resolution approving a request by CGA Engineers on behalf of Midwest Development to approve the preliminary plot of Lincolnshire Edition located northwest of 3520 Amesboro Avenue.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Uh, we do have, um, Nick Brewer from CGA Engineers and Kevin Fidero, uh, developer, uh, that are also on the line. So I wanted to give, uh, you two an opportunity to make comments if you wanted to about number nine.
Mayor, this is Kevin Fidero of Skogman Homes. Uh, I'm okay. I don't have comments to make unless council has questions for us.
All right.
Uh, Nick Brewer, uh, CGA. Thanks for everyone's time tonight. Uh, if you have any questions, direct them my way. Thanks.
All right, council? Madam clerk?
Mr. Greider?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Bozen.
Can you hear me?
Yep, Mr. Bozen?
Yeah, I have a question on number seven. Uh, at the February 17th meeting, we approved a contract with, uh, with this, uh, what is it? Parking Inc. out of Des Moines for, uh, $186,145. And I, I, uh, I knew I asked questions about, uh, additional costs at the, at that time. I looked through the minutes and I couldn't find it, but then I reviewed the video, uh, of the 17th meeting, what asked, because I identified up to about $60,000 in additional costs that we could be facing. And at, at the time, Craig Buscher from Park Inc. assured the council that this was the total amount that we were gonna be spending. And now less than two months later, we're back before this council to approve another $40,000 for this project. And I'd like to know what happened in between here and why we were assured that the original bid of $180,000, which number one was the high bid, not the low bid. Uh, we're looking for an, an additional $40,000 on this project.
All right, no? No?
No, it's muted.
No, take off your mute. All right.
Noel Anderson, City Planning Development Director. In that original agreement, um, we had the option with a cloud-based system, um, which would have been a, a regular monthly charge to operate the system, or we could go with the server, which we're choosing to go with if the council approves this amendment. Um, so this is the additional cost that was, that was known to be the few that would be operating one that would happen, uh, monthly with the cloud-based mobile server. After meeting internally and with Republic, uh, we thought the server, uh, system would be the better system to go with.
So Dave, were you able to hear that? There was like, uh, some elves on his line or something like that?
I heard, Eric, I, I heard it. I'm just curious why this wasn't presented to the council, why we didn't look into the, the need for the server to begin with, that we would have originally approved the, the entire practice, as opposed to coming back 50 days later and asking for another $40,000?
Yeah, no, I think it's the, the point of, at least at that point, uh, giving the information to say that you had two options, a cloud-based system versus a server-based system. So Dave wants, and, I mean, Mayor, I mean, um... system, so Dave wants, I mean, Mayor, I mean, um, uh, Councilman Bozen wants to know, uh, why?
I think originally we thought we would probably go with the cloud-based system, but as we looked at it further, we thought the server would work better, so we, we kept it at getting charged per month, but the cloud-based one did not have this initial cost, um, that we're looking at right now, but we thought the server would work better over time.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if, uh, Councilman Bozen was done or not yet.
Mr. Bozen, are you done yet?
Yes, sir, I'm done, thank you.
All right, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, my, my question is, is there, are there going to be more supplemental costs or additional costs to this now that we've chosen this, the server rather than the cloud-based? Are we going to be seeing more additional requests for monies coming our way regarding this project?
Good question. Noel, is this it for charges, or 60 days later, uh, Dave Bozen, I mean, uh, Councilman Bozen will be asking the same question again, is this it?
We believe this is it, yes.
We believe.
We-
Mr. Mayor?
Let me see if Mr. Morrissey's done. Mr. Morrissey?
No, no, that's fine, Mr. Mayor, I'm finished.
Okay, Mrs. Klein?
So, so if I'm understanding right, the cloud thing would have, would have generated a monthly payment to them, and we are not going to see that monthly payment now, right, with the server?
Correct, Noel?
That is, that is correct.
So there's no monthly fee, nothing like that, Noel?
Not for the data system that the board will be serving.
Is there any kind of monthly fee?
I do not believe, I'm trying to look back at, I don't have the original full contract in any, but this is the one that we had, uh, identified in, uh, in lieu of the cloud.
This just seems odd to me that we're voting on things and we don't really have all the details all the time.
Is this attached for the council? This, this is a-
This $40,000 should include, should include, there is one annual fee in there, otherwise that's included in the $40,000, so there should not be any other monthly fees.
And Kelly, was, uh, was this uploaded for the council to look at?
Yeah, the proposal's attached in, um, this agenda item, and then if you go back to the February 17th, 2020 council meeting, there's also a proposal attached to that as well.
Yeah, I think, and I think, listening to, uh, Mr. Morrissey and Mr. Bozen, the challenge is, um, being, knowing if it was going to be a cloud-based versus, uh, uh, purchasing, uh, the server, and that's, that's what the angst is, not that people don't know that these are, uh, parking control systems or whatever, but it is whether or not, or what type of system we were going with at the time, and that's what folks want to know, because if so, we would have known that this would have came back for some more, so I, I think we know what we're getting, what we got, it would have been nice to know then, so, um, uh, duly noted. Any other questions, seven, eight, and nine?
What, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What happens if we don't approve number seven, just so we're clear?
Uh, you probably will, um, have to go back to a monthly charge for the cloud-based portion of it, I would assume.
All right.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No on seven, yes on eight and nine.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a short form agreement and a professional services agreement with HR Green Company of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, originally approved on October 7th, 2019 in an amount not exceeding $500, in conjunction with finalized environmental investigation documentation at the former Wonder Bread Bakery site, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a funding release agreement with Blackhawk Contracting and Development Company for the release of bond fired sidewalk construction, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute all those documents. And next is a resolution approving an amendment to the development and minimum assessment agreement with Village Creek Rentals LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed November 20th, 2017-
You are muted, you're muted or un- you are unmuted.
Of two new homes and reverting property back to the city of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Gregor.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, questions about these items, council?
It's, uh-
Yes, sir.
I had a question on both 11 and 12, and we'll start with 11 first. Uh, we're, it appears we're releasing the, the $500 in funding prior to them putting the sidewalks in, or can, can Noel or somebody answer why we're, we're, need to give this money six weeks early prior to the job being completed?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, um, so we worked with the, uh, Blackhawk Contracting and Development for, I believe, eight different houses, um, because of the time of the year, at the end of the year last year, they didn't get all the sidewalks put in, they are requesting the funding, um, now before they can get the sidewalks in, they're waiting for the, for the weather to break a little bit, um, so this is a request by them to move ahead with that prior to the sidewalks fully established in place.
So we're, we're only talking like six weeks, and my question is, if the sidewalks aren't in by the date, the last, of the time in May, what's our recourse if we pay them now?
Um, we would obviously have to go after them legally to, uh, have the sidewalks put in place, either by us doing it and then, um, going after them for the cost.
I mean, it's, it's just a, it's just such a short timeframe of, of the six weeks. Uh, and then on number 12, on this development agreement, and, and it appears that, and it's come before this council lately, that some of these development agreements we're making amends to are actually development agreements that were, should have been null and void because they weren't, uh, completed in, in the timeframe, uh, these, these, two of these, uh, lots are supposed to have houses, one in 2018 and one in 2019, the permits taken out in April, uh, on that, on that same year, which evidently they haven't been, because we're extending this development agreement out a couple more years. My question, my question, Noel, is did, did they get the $5,000 upfront for the, for the lots when we signed the original development agreement? That's my first question.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, no, they do not, um,
they actually had to pay us $5,000 for the lot.
Okay, so, so, they get $5,000 then when they, when it's completed, is that how?
That is correct, when they, when it's completed, and the reason for this, and I don't want to be a broken record, uh, the workforce housing, um, the reason Mr. Straylow had gone for the multiple lots was he had the rest of the property on the Chalmers area where he's going to build two houses, to qualify for the state workforce housing tax credits, he was trying for, he had to do a minimum, he gets a one multi-unit, and so he was going for the property up on Upton, um, at, to get two more residential units, he's going to build four total, so we were kind of waiting out the state program just to get that would come back, again, it's evident that it doesn't appear to at least this year, so we're going to amend that, we'll get back the lots up at Amesboro and Upton, um, to try to get another developer to go ahead with, and Mr. Straylow is going to go ahead with two houses, um, on the Chalmers lots.
So we're getting both Upton ones back, but are, are you saying that, that we were waiting on, on housing credits back in 2017 and 18?
Yes, yeah, they had to try to do the minimum four units, and again, with that not, program not being there, he's going to go ahead with two.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was wondering, Noel, if there had been any other, um, people or developers wanting the property that reverts back to the city?
Yes, actually, we have, we have, uh, at least one interested party, possibly two, that is interested in the Amesboro and Upton, uh, land area that was coming back.
Have, have they, during the time that, uh, this development was supposed to be taking place, has, has interest been expressed about those properties during that time that we've had to forego because of this, uh, development agreement that was in place?
I believe we had an inquiry on it back in the winter, so they would have been waiting for, for springtime for construction anyway, um, but we, but yes, I mean, they, I believe they contacted us back in, I believe it was October or November, um, about whether or not we were going to get the lots back, and at that time, we were still working with Mr. Straylow and waiting to see if the workforce housing would come back for the spring.
And are they still unarrested?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if everyone else is finished, I'd like to make a comment on number 11. A lot of my family members are in construction, and they don't get paid in advance, they get a down payment, but they get paid in advance for the very reason Mr. Anderson said, if we're holding the bag, we have to lawyer up and send in the troops to try to recover monthly, I'd just hate to see that the city doesn't do business in a better way.
All right, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes, on 10 and 12, and no on 11.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 13, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Number 13 is a request by DGOG Waterloo, Iowa, 062619 LLC to rezone a 3.082 acre property north of 5225 Dyzer Road from R4 Multiple Residential to CP Plan Commercial District to construct a new Dollar General store. I have a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the zoning map referred to in section 10 dash 4 dash 4, a rezone of certain property located at 5225 Dyzer Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, and we have, uh, one person on the phone, and we have an email from Marine Kraus that I want to read really quickly, and it says, "We are writing concerning the vote on the Dollar General store on Dyzer Road, Shawlish Road. Our concerns are with the business going in there, what effect the water will have on the Saint Creek. Uh, the creek drains through Cedar Terrace neighborhood, and we've had problems for over 30 years, and, and do we need more problems?", question mark, uh, people of Cedar Terrace, so, uh, it's one person, it's not signed by all, but just wanted to read, uh, Mrs. Kraus' comments, uh, and I believe we also have Joe Russo on the phone from, uh, Dollar General as well, uh, um, so first, uh, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, I just wanted, uh, you and the rest of council to, uh, know that, uh, since last week, I've, I've had, uh, two phone calls, and, well, three phone calls now, expressing opposition to this, and then, uh, also, uh, I got seven letters, uh, of opposition from people who live in the Timothy Ridge area that are very much opposed to this development uh, agreement, or this, this project, uh, taking place that are for the reasons that have been cited before, which include the, uh, the traffic, uh, flow, noise, uh, and just that it's not, um, something that should move forward, uh, because the neighbors are opposed to it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Mrs. Jewen?
Uh, yes, like Mr. Morrissey, and I think everyone, I've gotten a, a lot of, of correspondence or phone calls opposing this. When this came before planning and zoning, did they receive the same opposition, and did they address the concerns at that time?
All right, Mr. Anderson, was there any opposition at the planning and zoning meeting?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, I do not believe there was any opposition at the planning commission meeting, we may have one, had one caller that asked, caller that asked a question about it but did not oppose it, um, but there was none at the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A follow-up question to Mr. Anderson, was this, were all of the neighbors aware of this planning and zoning, uh, change request?
No, what's the, uh, radius of, uh, contact?
By state code, we mail out to people within 250 feet.
Did you, did you hear that, Mrs. Jewen?
Yeah, but I don't know that, how, does that include all the neighborhoods that we've been hearing from?
No, state code, state code mandates that we send it out to 250, uh, feet, I believe, so that's, that's what that is, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me, let me, let me let Mrs. Jewen finish first.
Would that have included the Timothy Ridge and all the other neighborhoods that we've heard from?
No.
This is Noel, um, so no, that would have been, the mailing notice would have went out to John Rusturn, who is, uh, selling a portion of his property to them, to the south, uh, the city of Waterloo, Waterworks has a parcel of land across the street, we didn't count them in the calculations, um, and then the, uh, there's two parcels owned by, uh, um, the Humphles.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm still not finished, Mrs. Fu-
Okay.
So, so in other words, a lot of the people we're hearing from were not notified about this prior to planning and zoning's action? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, they were not mailed the notification.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs.-
Chair, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we go to Mrs. Klein.
Um, that's, that's what I've been hearing, I, all of the correspondence and calls that I've been getting, first of all, they thanked me and Mr. Morrissey for voting against it last time, but then they said they felt it was being sneaked in because they had not, it took them a long time to become aware of the project and to mount, uh, an opposition to it, because they didn't get any of those, and 250 feet, or heck, you might as well mail it to the bird nest next door. I, I just don't think this is going to be neighborhood-friendly at all in their neighborhood, and I do feel they have a right to feel as if this is something that's been just been sneaking.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, really, really quickly, uh, just let me add, state code says 250, so the city of Waterloo fa- fa- um, followed the guidance of state code, uh, this was a planning, was discussed in the planning meeting, and now is being discussed in the city council with, uh, three readings on this particular, uh, rezoning request, so, uh, there, you know, it, it, maybe not, uh, according to state code, but, uh, we are hearing their voices now. Uh, Mr. Greider?
So, uh, I also voted no on this last week, uh, this is in my ward, heard a lot from my constituents, and, and, and it's clear that they, that they do not want this, that this is not good for the neighborhood, and I understand, I understand the state code and I, and I get all of that, um, but I also sit on, on the planning and zoning, and it's a, it's a good commission, and I respect all the people that are on there, but, and this is a larger discussion, that it's in the afternoon when a lot of people are working, um, and if you, if you can't make it, or you don't hear about it, it, it's hard to get there and, and voice opposition, and I understand that we met the state code and that's fine, but, um, everyone that I've heard from is, is opposed to this, um, and so I will be, I will be voting against it again tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we do a, before we do a second round, uh, is there anyone else that wanted to speak before Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
As, as the other council people have expressed, uh, since the last meeting, I have had a number of emails, uh, and I- had a number of emails in opposition to this. I've had none in favor of it. And, and I, and I understand every one of these people's concern. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I received two individuals that contacted me, one on the phone and one through the email. And I just had a couple of questions. The person that emailed me, this is probably a question for Noel. But from a standpoint of Noel, this Dollar General going in that area, is, will that really have a, is there evidence that would show that that is a negative impact on residential properties having that Dollar General in that area?
All right, Noel, does it, is it documented it has a negative impact in that area?
I mean, obviously, that's, that's something that people are going to have a different opinion on. You know, the, the site itself is shown on the future land use map as a mixed residential, which does include low, medium, and high density residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial, which we designated, or we saw it in the category of neighborhood commercial. It is located right on Highway 218 Front Pitch. So that generally is a, a land use site that can be suitable for commercial. You know, there's no houses immediately abutting it. There's a good distance away. And again, it's, it's going to be a matter of opinion of, of what impact it has on, on residential. Some people may, may like to have it there as a convenience. Other people may not want to have commercial out in that area where their residences are.
All right, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Are you done?
Mr. Mayor?
Let me, let me, let me, let me, because this, you know, from the audio and visual and, and connection. Mr. Amos, are you done?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Morrissey had previously asked for a second round of questions. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what I wanted to add was, the one person that I talked to out there had read the article in the paper after last week's vote, and that's how that person knew about it, which resulted in her going to her neighbors. And the six other letters that I received, not one of them knew anything about this at all. The lady that I talked to from Timothy Ridge also informed me that there is a proposed 85 lot residential development out in that same area, which she perfectly pointed out means more congestion. And as we know, and as we heard in the presentation of the theme park and the attached materials, many times where theme parks go up, you have additional residential development around there. And I guess I return to the concern, the safety concern I have for the way that this has got to be developed so that, that, that congestion that Quagmire, as I refer to it, that whole issue's got to be resolved. And this does not do it. This, this project does not do it. Changing the zoning does not do it. So I continue in my opposition, and we're voting no on this again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Mrs. Jewen?
Yes, the letter that you read, Mr. Mayor, cited concerns about problems with flooding and other water issues. Have those issues been addressed?
In relation to this project? No. Jamie?
Yes.
No?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. This site has been reviewed for stormwater detention, and it meets all the requirements for the city ordinances, meaning they are required to hold on-site the amount of water between what was originally there and what's being developed, so that there is not going to be a large increase in runoff downstream.
So that means that there won't be any additional problems for the neighbors?
No, what it means is, basically with stormwater, when they store the water on site, there's a large volume of water that they store on site, and they will let it out slowly. Everybody downstream will see more volume, but the rate at which it flows downstream will be no different than what runs off of that site currently from a farm field. And I know that's a little, little hard to understand, but basically the idea is they hold a lot of the water back and let it out slowly so the storm sewer downstream can handle the extra water.
Okay, but that area has been prone to flooding and, and issues. This isn't going to make it any better or any worse?
Correct. It should have very little impact on what happens downstream.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Russo. Is that someone else? We have Mr. Russo.
Yeah, I had a quick question.
Okay. Who was that?
Mr. Mayor, my question, this is Jerome. My question was, once again, to Noel. Noel, I know you said you sent out, if someone was within 250 feet, you were required to send out a letter. So I guess my question is, is, is how close is the next house outside of that 250-foot range that you have to send the letters to?
Sure, my apologies. And it was actually 200 feet, I'm sorry, by state code. And we have to match that because we cannot be more, less stringent than state code. And depending upon which way you see it, the City of Waterloo used to mail out further and, and count it further. But then we were told by legal that we need to match state code because since there's two sides to every story, we have to match the amount of the state codes that's noticed too. In your packet, there should have been a map that would show you the, the boundary area that it was mailed to.
Right. And I did see that, but I didn't see any residences around that area. That's why I was asking, you know.
Correct. There are ways out because of Highway 218 is such a large right of way with, and it doesn't get over to Timothy Ridge. Of course, the, the other houses on Dyzer Road to the south are probably a quarter of a mile down. So the only ones that were, that were notified would have been the, the farms that immediately to the southwest.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Russo on the phone. Mr. Russo, you're hearing the comments from counsel. Do you want to chime in a little bit?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. This is Joe Russo with Farnsworth Group from Pontiac, Illinois. Just in regards to the, the traffic and the safety issue, we reviewed the traffic study from H.R. Green that took into account the traffic from the proposed amusement park. And that with the store was not going to add any amount of traffic that was going to make a, a turn lane justified or anything like that. You know, as long as we, we would take care of the tree clearing that, that I discussed last week, that we'd be willing to take care of, we'd achieve our adequate site distance that there would make, you know, no safety issues with traffic at that site, even assuming, you know, the, the amusement park was there. The city engineer covered it already, but I'll just kind of touch base that, you know, we submitted our info on stormwater detention for the site. And then, I know we submitted earlier this afternoon, just some proposed architecture for the store, just to kind of meet those, those additional desires that were, you know, addressed by, by you and, and some of the council last week, that we'd be willing to take on, you know, and add to the store if it were to be developed.
Any, any direct questions for Mr. Russo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yeah, if, if I was looking at those plans correctly, it looks like the only difference you're making to the, the building is just in the, the brown siding. Is that the only change?
No, it would be, I, I don't know if you, you have the email available to you. But those, those exterior upgrades would be masonry, wainscoting, those, those wood panels, and then vertical brick bands, along with parapets that have been added to better shield the HVACD units on the roof.
And I might have missed that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions before we vote? Comments? All right, so the motion to file considering pass for the second time is here. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mr. Greider?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
All right, so that second reading actually does not pass. So Noel, where to from now? Is it, is the conversation over? What's, what's the, what happens now?
Yes, with counsel, with counsel not passing the second reading, obviously, the third reading won't come back to you. We'll go back with the, the applicants and see how they want to proceed. There are some timelines in the zoning ordinance that cannot reapply for the same rezoning. I believe it's for a four-month period. So we'll have to see how they want to proceed.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russo, counsel. I have to break the rules today. Just want to let you know, we've been keeping a close eye and, and looking over this COVID. We have our meeting briefings on Tuesday and part of our department head meetings as well. We are asking people to be safe at home, limit travel as much, and that's about all we can do for our portion of it. So PD and fire and everybody's taking a look at all of potential large events that were scheduled as such. But we have been focusing, locked in on this COVID as well. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.